I think it was a little fiery. Come on, somebody. I think we got chipples sometime.
Thank you. We will now have the open remarks and purpose by President Marion Tuck.
First of all, I'd like to say good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. It's good to see you all here. I just want to congratulate all of y'all because y'all are looking beautiful out here today. My name is Marion Tuck, Jr., president of the Unity Coalition. If any members of the Unity Coalition at this time, would you please stand for me? Y'all please just say stand. First of all, I want you to know we are a group of people that have came together for one strategic goal, and that's unification. The Unity Coalition is an organization designed to inspire and unite our community. Our goal is to make life better for all citizens. We are working to display love, kindness, care, and support, and to encourage participation in the community and the political process. The Unity Coalition strives to promise and promote civic awareness, education, and responsibility. We love Washington, Wiltz County, so do you all. We want to see our home grow and prosper. Our plan is to stay focused on promoting unity. There's a saying, "Together we stand."
By the we fall.
By the we fall. Once again, I want to thank you all for our first of many more forums to come. Y'all enjoy yourselves. And I thank both of these candidates to come out here because they're going to take some stabbing in these seats, but guess what? They did an ultimate goal of the sacrifice to come here and show leadership for District One. Thank you. Y'all enjoy. God bless you. May God be with you.
All right. Thank you, President Tuck, for those remarks. All right. Now, we will move into the question section for the candidates. Each candidate will have a three-minute opening statement. After the opening statement, they will be asked questions that I have here. The candidates will have two minutes to answer those questions. We will have city councilman District One with questions. You have two minutes to answer those questions. Then we will have the appreciation and closing prayer. To the candidates, I will be keeping time here on the phone, and when it goes off, you'll hear sound, and we will move on. Okay? All right. We're going to set the clock three minutes for your opening statements. Does any candidate wish to go first?
Ladies first.
All right. We will have Kim ready to make her opening statements. You may begin.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Thursday.
Today Thursday.
Today Tuesday. Tuesday. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the love that you've already shown me. I really appreciate you. And then I also want to thank the Unity Coalition for having this right here. The reason that I am running for candidate is, back in 1992, I'm going to read something to you. "The political process leading to nomination or election in the city of Washington and Wiltz County are not equally open to African-American citizens, and that they have less opportunity than other members of the electorate to participate in political process and to elect representatives of their choice. There has been a history of private and official discrimination against African-Americans in the city of Washington and Wiltz County and the state of Georgia, including discrimination against blacks attempting to exercise their right of franchise and to participate equally with whites in the political process. We continue to bear the effects of racial discrimination in such areas as education, employment, housing, health, which hinders their ability to participate effectively in the political process. Voting in the city of Washington is racially polarized. This comes from the 1992 lawsuit. It's been about 33 years. We are the progress. Before 1992, we couldn't hold seats equally on city council, on the school board, in the county commission. We have made tremendous progress, but we cannot keep making progress until we have the power. The power comes in the vote, and it comes in the election. It is important for us to gain power and keep making strides and making progress. We are a great district, and our district has been disenfranchised continuously. But if we get it together, if we come and vote and do what we need to do, this district can be on a level playing field with District Two. Right now, it's not. My goal, but I need help because I can't do all of this by myself. I need you to come out and vote, and I need your support. We're running to make sure that the quality of life is equal for all the citizens in District One. Thank you."
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Ketro. I want to thank the Unity Coalition group for putting this thing together. I want to also thank my other candidate for participating in this particular forum. Hopefully, we do have more forums to come. We ended up not doing one with the chamber, but that is what it is. A little bit about me. I was born in New Jersey. Lived there for a few years of my life, and then moved to Pennsylvania. And moved to Virginia after that, and eventually I ended up in 2008 at Fort Stewart, Georgia. And that's how I ended up in Georgia. Stayed there ever since. Now, when I got out of the Army in about 2011, '12, I then moved to Beaufort. I've lived in Hall County, Banks County, Jackson County since 2017, as have now Washington. Been around, been all over the East Coast. I do a lot of traveling in Georgia for work. I've been to very rural cities and towns, South Georgia. Unfortunately, I work a lot in Atlanta, so we know what that's like. One of the things that I enjoyed about Washington, when me and my wife were, we do a lot of back-road driving, we found Washington, and it was this little gem of a town. We said, hey, you know, let's go ahead and start a life here. Jackson County was getting a little too developed for us. And we found Washington, this little gem. But one of the things that kind of stuck out was, it's such a great town. The people are great, but was this division something I never understood? That's not the way I was raised. And I understand me being up here, a lot of people have targets on me because of my skin color. It's going to be that way. But I ask that you look inside of who I am. Let me tell you about me. Have that conversation, and it'll probably surprise you. They say, "Don't judge a book by its cover." I've done things and been through things that you'd be surprised, and I think we all have in common. That'll be about the end of my remarks. It's about 10 seconds left.
I want to thank the candidates for those open remarks. And whenever we move into the question and answer section of the forum, I have five questions, thought-out questions about the Unity Coalition that we came up with to make sure that we get the information we need, give the candidates an opportunity to answer some questions that we, as communities, do have concern about. The first question, and since Ms. Kim went first, we'll let Chris answer the first question. First question is, "What specific plans do you have to improve the overall quality of life for residents in our community, particularly in areas such as healthcare access, public safety, and economic opportunity?"
All right. Can you guys hear me better now? All right. Here we go. So, as far as improving the overall quality of life, a lot of it stems from jobs. You have to have jobs. If you do better with a job, then you're going to make more money, so then you can get yourself out of a certain situation. Maybe you're in a bad situation, living situation, whatever. Get a job. One of the other things is, well, do you have access to the jobs? That's another issue there. That's further conversation that we can have. I believe it starts with caring, other than just the jobs. You care about yourself. If you care about yourself enough, you're going to say, "Well, I don't want to live this way." So then that stimulates motivation, and then that stimulates growth, and it just kind of trickles on down. So that can start with you, and you better in your own life. But by you better in your own life, you can help your neighbor better his life, and then the community betters itself. So then safety, economics, and the housing will all fall into one thing. It's just all linked together, but you just have, the citizen has to care. Government can't care for you. You have to care. You have to go after it. We live in America. It's the greatest country in the world. You could be anything you want to be. It takes the grit and determination that starts with you to fix it. And that's all I have.
So, we're going to talk about overall quality of life, and he wanted us, the Unity Coalition wanted us to focus on three things. The first one was healthcare. So, we have a great hospital. We need to make sure it stays open. They've already started closing rural hospitals. They closed down four, Sandersville being one of the closest ones to us. We need to make sure that we're utilizing and accessing our hospital so that they can see that it's a vibrant part of our community, and then make, partner with the hospital because there are some grants and grant opportunities for them to get so that we can stay vibrant and we can keep our healthcare, access to our healthcare. They may not can do everything, but they can stabilize you and get you to Augusta or wherever you need to go. So, a hospital is very important. Also, because we're in the state of Georgia, and Governor Kemp, he doesn't, he has made it so we don't have to use the federal marketplace for insurance. Go ahead and get you a broker. You can use mine. But the health insurance is not what it used to be, the healthcare marketplace. But you want to go ahead and make sure everybody has health insurance, and it is possible and it is affordable. Just if you don't have insurance on your job, get you a broker. It's no fees for their services, and they really do help. So, go ahead and take care of that. As far as public safety, the city is paying about $900,000 a year for the sheriff's office to go ahead and make sure that we're safe. However, there is one thing in particular that we really need. We need some substations. We especially need one over there off of School Street, and then I'm open to suggestions for where another one should be, but we definitely need a substation over there off of School Street. And then as far as economic opportunity, we need to start. So, I got 10 seconds. I'm going to say Wall Street on Whitehall, an open flea market. It shouldn't be any different than the farmer's market that they have downtown, Whitehall, so that my people on Harper Street and School Street and everybody else can get to it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Second question. Considering the recent situation with the Department of Community Affairs and the loss of $600,000 grant, what specific steps will you take to ensure this does not happen again? How will you work to secure and protect funding so that District One receives the resources it needs?
So, what we have is a systemic issue. I work with funding opportunities all the time in my job. So, sorry, Mayor, but what he did is he gave excuses. I was taught that excuses are the tools of the incompetent, which leads to monuments of nothing, and those who use them rarely succeed at anything. So, we can't use excuses with federal money. He gave good reasons, but when I put my federal hat on as a job, because those are good reasons, bad reasons he gave, but when I put my federal hat on as a reviewer, those are excuses. We have systemic issues. When we send that document back, if we want some more money, we're going to have to ensure that this will never happen again. We have to have a systemic plan, a systemic human resource issue. We have to have all these systems answered. It's about 13 of them that I deal with on a regular basis. We have to ensure, because the city of Washington, no matter who the mayor is, no matter who the administrator is, is legally and fiscally responsible for all of the funding. So, it doesn't matter who it is. It has to be done. If all your staff walk out and quit, it still has to be done. So unless you have a systemic plan in place that is going to ensure that this money is never going to be mishandled again, or however you want to call it, if it wasn't mishandled, if it wasn't spent, how are we going to ensure DCA that this will never happen again? And you have to answer those 13 questions to ensure that systems are in place so that it won't happen again.
All right. I think she'd probably be the best one to handle all that. Listen, we understand that the chip's money only covers a small percentage of Washington District One, so we need to stop acting like that's the whole district. All right? The second thing is, going back to my initial statement, is you can fix your situation. How those chip houses work, if you have a job and you make money and you put the money into the house, it improves the value, does it not? So, it all starts, once again, with you caring. You have to care. Not necessarily you guys, but anybody that participates in that program, anybody that's thinking about that program. I said, "We educate people on what it takes to willing to buy a house outside of using that program." This way, you're not, you don't fall into relying on the government, the city, to issue funds so you can maintain that property. But anyway, so that's about all I have to say with that. As far as insurance, that the money gets taken care of and the proper paperwork's done, that's not my department. I can ask about it. They can lie to me. As long as I, if I'm not filling out that paperwork myself, I don't know who's done properly. Now, I'm sure there's some other way that I could get into it and look over their shoulders, but come on. It's somebody else's job. My job is to promote growth to the citizens, give you suggestions other than the government alternative. And that's all I have to say about that.
Just a reminder to our audience, please keep your mumbling inside conversations very minimal. I respect for the candidates. Thank you. All right. Question number three. What are your specific plans for the Gordon Street School project? How will you ensure it addresses the community needs, stays on budget, and moves forward on schedule?
All right. So, the Gordon Street School, that's a project right there. What I would like to do is honestly buy it personally and then turn it into a mall, but I don't have that kind of money. So, with the current state of the building, it's a very delicate, very delicate situation. It has sat for so long, and then it's the dilapidated state it's in. It's going to take a heck of a lot of money to come back, to put back into, to revive it. And the citizens really need to understand that. I mean, you go and redo your bathroom, gut it, and put everything back in, it's going to cost a pretty penny. That's why we're all not redoing our bathrooms. I currently, well, I had worked on a project, the first black school in Lawrenceville. It's now a library. Actually, the first one was torn down by a tornado, but anyway, they came back and made a library out of it. It's called the Hooper Renwick Library. That project, the city of Lawrenceville used $11 million of SPOLOST money. That building was a third of the size of the Gordon Street School. So, any money coming from this, or coming from this, is going to be substantial. Now, one of the things we can do is stop fighting amongst ourselves. We develop the area, meaning we bring jobs and growth, economic growth into the city that people might be willing to spend a little bit of money. They're not going to spend money when a URA only has $6,000 in the budget, when you have a several-million-dollar project, and this, they've had it for how many years now? So, it's figuring out a direction of what the town needs to go in. Oh, four seconds. All right. Well, that's about it. But yeah, we'll talk more about it later. Give me a call. Just call me.
So, here's what we need to do. We need to go back to the original plan that we had when Mayor Burns was in office. So, we only had about two years with him, and we laid out a plan. Don't know what happened. Well, I know what happened. We lost power, and we lost the ability to put on the URA, who needed to be on the URA, to carry out the original plan. So, we are where we are, but we need to partner with, the city needs to partner with the URA, the Housing Authority, and the Gordon Street School Committee. We need to start small, and the first thing that we need to do is do an amphitheater. If we can get that amphitheater done, that will bring in the money, that will bring in the artists, and then we can use that money to start rehabbing the Gordon Street School. It is a historic property. It's important to people who live in District One, and we ain't trying to hear that, all that other stuff. So, that's what needs to happen. That was the original plan for the Gordon Street School. We had a specific plan, and we need to stay on, get back on track with that plan and make it be what it needs to be for the citizens in District One.
All right. Moving right along. Question number four. We're going to start back with Kim. Many residents in District One are struggling to find housing that fits their budgets. How do you plan to address this need and ensure safe, affordable housing for everyone?
So, again, the city doesn't have all the resources that we need, but there is one group that we need to try to partner with, and that's Habitat for Humanity. That is a great organization. You put in sweat equity. It's affordable for people, and so we need to try to work on that and get them in. We have plenty of land, and that is something that we can do. Also, in the long run, I don't remember who, I think Charles and Barbara went with us, but we took a trip to Macon. They had an old school, just like Gordon Street, and they made housing into it. They kept their original structures and some of the things that were aesthetic to the community and that was important to the community, and they made some apartments out of that school building. That's what we want to get to. So, after we partner with URA, the Gordon Street School Committee, and we do these partnerships, we bring in some money, that is a possibility for safe, affordable housing, along with Habitat for Humanity. And then also, the last thing is, Washington Commons, the new apartment complex. Now, they have, but they're not as high as other places. They are very reasonable, and if we can get in now before they get higher, I think you'll have, and there are lots of opportunities. We can take the classes. We can bring the classes here on the housing. We've got an expert right here in the community, Barbara Bacon, and she can do everything that we need to get done to make those places affordable.
I like the Habitat thing. You know, that slipped my mind. That was a really good, really good idea. Can I take that? Can I take that? Anyway, so, we talk about housing within your budget. Well, what's your budget? You spending $600 a month on an iPhone or whatever? Are you mismanaging the money that you have? See, what if we educate people on how to properly spend their money within reasons? Now, you don't have to be cheap. You're disprovable, right? That's what my mom, that's what my mom used to say. I'm not cheap. I'm disprovable. The housing system, we'll get, what you bring in the jobs, then you make more money. We educate you on how to buy a house. It's very redundant. I said it earlier. We educate you on how to buy a house. We educate you on how to maintain a house. Some people buy a house, they're like, "Oh, yeah, got this house." What do I do with it? That group's about to fall off. What do I do? I didn't know that when I went to buy the house, because I didn't do a proper inspection, because I didn't know what homeownership looked like. So, the affordable house thing, once again, starts with you. Now, there is a possibility that we could use tax payments for new home buyers. Hey, you don't have to pay property taxes. It's not, it's not a government program that says, "Hey, you're not paying property taxes for the next, you know, couple of years." If possible, if you can work it out with the mortgage companies, if you get a mortgage. But it's all education, just educating people about real estate, drawing people in for the business to then maybe build multifamily homes. And there we go. There we go.
All right. Question number five. This is the fifth and final question from the Unity Coalition. Chris, we'll start back with you. Beyond football and basketball, what ideas or plans do you have to expand youth activities in District One?
This one, I'm a big fan of. This weekend, I spoke with some young men in our, in the District One community, two 18-year-old men. And one of the conversations we had was, he said, "I know how to make money. I just don't know how to manage it." And I'm like, "You know how to manage it? So, your mom and dad are busy working all the time. They're paying the bills, but they're not telling you exactly what you're doing. But you're going to grow up and you're going to become an adult in this society and not know how to take care of yourself." The right, because you were never taught. The right way, because you were never taught. Nothing against your parents. But I say, I wanna see programs out there teaching kids how to manage money, how to, how to, how to have a budget, that you don't need to have that expensive hot dog or expensive car. You can buy the cheap one, just for now, just for now, and save that money. Educate them on what it looks like to buy a house. What you, how we have realtors in this town. They can have a conversation, say, "Hey, listen, you know, you saved up this much money. You get your credit like this. By the time you're twenty-five, guess what? You got enough money to buy a house." Imagine that. Encourage them. Not just in those programs, but they, other things in life. How to change times. Those life skills that we are, that kids just aren't learning. Then they walk out in the world because they get the bird on their phone all the time, and they're like, "Well, what do I do?" And then they find themselves in bad situations. Then who do they call to get them out? Probably their parents or nobody. That's what I wanna see. I wanna see life skills, life coach skills, and advice, leadership.
Alright, so, we're gonna try this, uh, again. We tried this several years ago when we were putting in the pool. We had the YMCA down here. We were gonna have a YMCA. However, and this is why I say, unless we can get District Two to cooperate with us, we'll never get anywhere. So, the YMCA was ready to come. Reese Booker Center was gonna be the site. They, and because when they told us that it wasn't gonna happen, I called to find out, and they said that all of your council people in the city were not on the same page. And there was sev, there was a couple of them that did not want that to happen. So, I say we try it again. This time, we partner with Parks and Rec and see what we can do. If the Y is still, if we left a bad taste in the Y's, uh, mouth, let's try the Boys and Girls Club. That will get children, and that will get everybody involved. But we really do need to partner, because like I said, Washi, the city of Washington doesn't have enough money to do everything that we need to do. But if we can, if we can get the YMCA to come back and partner with us, and if they say no, then we need to try the Boys and Girls Club. So, that way, we'll have opportunities for our children to get done what they need to get done.
Alright, now we're gonna move on to the, uh, questions that were submitted by, uh, the audience. I have about fourteen questions. Uh, we were slated for eight-thirds, I believe. We got about an hour to get through all these, and we, you know, go ahead and get moving, and I'll do my best to get through all of the, uh, cards here. The first question, uh, I'm just gonna send it to, uh, Kim. What is your platform?
My platform is a good quality of life for all the citizens in District One. We wanna see a thriving, safe community where everyone is treated with dignity and respect. That's what we're looking to do in District One. Everything that I say is about improving the quality of life. We don't wanna just exist. We wanna have a good quality of life. So, everyone is treated, you may not be able to treat everybody fairly, but you can treat everyone with equity. And so, we wanna make sure that is what we're gonna do.
My platform. Okay. This goes further than just the district of District One. My platform stretches Washington wide. You see, Washington has a lot of history here, good and bad. Good and bad. And my platform... Anyway, so, my, my platform for Washington, can you hear me all right? Okay. Is to preserve what we already have as far as historical, significant buildings, like the, like the school, like the downtown, like the homes. But also, progressively, I use that word very, uh, progressively develop or plan around what we have, around our city and the identity of the city. Now, you have to make an identity to begin with, but yes, that's my, that's my goal. That's my platform, is to, is to build, but also keep what we have as far as the community. That's Washington, not just District One. My District One goal is to unify. My property is right on the border of One and Two. In this room, everybody looks the same to me. So, thank you.
Uh, next question. Question is, why would you run for a District One seat? And the, uh, second part of that is, can you be lo, can you be loyal to this district?
Well, I would run for a District One seat, for one, because I live in District One. Number two, because I feel that the council members over the past few terms have let this district and the city down. And it, and they let them down by creating division. The problem is, is a small percentage of the District One residents play into it. It's not the real District One. The real District One, it doesn't matter what your skin color is. It matters who you are and the things you've done. So, if I have a business, and I wanna reach across the lines and say, "Hey, come do business with me," I should be able to do that. Why? Because I don't see the division. Anyway. Uh, yeah, but that's about, that's about all I have to say about that.
Uh, do I really need to answer that question? I am District One. Uh, I've only lived in District One since I've been here. I have a serious passion for making sure that I'm a, I, I, and I am a team player, but I need to play on a level playing field. We have not been on a level playing field. And until we play on a level playing field, that's why I'm running. So, you can say everything and all this other stuff that you wanna say. It is not a level playing field. That's why I fight for District One, and that's why I am running, because I will be a team player. I'll cross the lines. I don't have no problem with that. But District One gotta get something out the deal first.
Uh, as I read through some of the questions, uh, they may come across as they're directed to, uh, one particular candidate or the other, uh, I'm just gonna read the questions and allow the candidates to respond. Uh, back to Kim. How do you plan to ensure equity in city resources so District One doesn't get overlooked?
Well, in the words of the Color Purple, "All I know how to do is fight." And I will fight. So, you don't have to worry about me backing down. If it's for District One, I'm ten toes down. We gotta make sure that, I can, I don't know how many other ways to say it, that the level, level, the plane, the playing field is level. Until we can reach the level of District Two, then we're never gonna catch up. All we need is some cooperation from the other side. I sat on city council for eight years. I know what District Two will and will not do. And if most of the time, it's them that won't cooperate. So, you know, and I understand, because they looking out for their district. So, they fighting me, and I'm fighting them. But at some point, somebody gotta make some, some concessions, and, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, if you need me to react, I can. Okay. Alright, so, the question was, "How do you plan to ensure equity in city resources so District One doesn't get overlooked?"
Be reasonable when you're approaching the city and District Two about what your, what your request is. And let me clear that up. Don't say, don't say, "Hey, let's use, let's get eleven million dollars to build a mall, and it come out of the city. Let's build it in District One." That's kinda, that's kinda selfish. So, being reasonable when you're asking for your, the others across the aisle to join with you on a vote. Now, as far as re, uh, other resources, I mean, it's, 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 they have a downtown. So, a lot of times, you have a lot of resources that get dedicated to a downtown area. Now, the good thing is, Depot is an extension of that downtown. So, in a way, District One has a piece of that downtown. So, funding could be secured for that, to, to beautify, to attract. Now, the other thing is, you have to care. If the citizens don't care about their district and about the things given to them, why are we gonna spend more money? So it could be thrown away? So, if you care about it, and you take care of things that are given to you, like your parents say, well, then, then, then it's fine. We'll give you more. Not saying that, that's not, that's what's happening right now, but that's a big part of it. It all starts with, my earlier statement is caring. Ten seconds, but I was gonna have to let that go. Thank you.
Uh, can I, can I please, uh, remind you guys, some of you may have walked in late. Please hold your comments while, uh, the candidates are speaking. Thank you. Alright, next question. Uh, I believe this goes back to Chris, uh, first. If elected, what are your plans to support current city council members in District One?
Well, I guess that depends on the topic. Because that's the thing. That's, that's, we have to work together on whatever we, uh, we agree is an issue. So, I can't really speak to that now, because the topic's not in front of me. But I do plan on working with them. I mean, I'm here now. I'm here now trying to bridge a gap. So, on that council, regardless of who it ends up being now, and then who it ends up being in November, I will be there to represent District One and Washington. Doesn't matter necessarily what my plans are. It's what the conglomerate has to say, i.e. District One, and then the city after that. So, I hope that answers that question.
So, hopefully, uh, what my expectation is, that all three council members work together. We meet, we talk about it. We know what you need, what you want, what you gotta have. We gonna talk about it. We may not all three agree, but when we come to the get, table, we come together as one. One band, one sound, one voice, and we're gonna stick together. Now, we may not like each other behind closed doors, and we may have to hash some things out, but we are gonna do what's best for District One.
Alright, next question. Why are you running in District One, an all-black district?
Really? Really? I think it's obvious. I am black. And I'm running to make sure that District One, and also, because of nineteen ninety-two lawsuit, y'all heard me read in my opening statement that we never had the opportunity, before the lawsuit, to sit and have equal representation on city council, on the school board, on the county commissioners. So, I'm making sure that we keep what's in effect, what they spent money on when we went to the federal courts, to make sure. Every time there's a census, we go to the Justice Department, we draw, redraw the lines to ensure that the majority of District One is black and rep, and well-represented.
Why are you running in District One, an all-black district?
That, that really just kills me. I just don't, I don't understand that. That's... Okay, so, as far as this nineteen ninety-two situation goes on, listen, guys, it's twenty twenty-five. It's twenty twenty-five. It is not that bad anymore. And I don't know, you, hold up. You're gonna tell me, listen, listen, you know what? And I say that, I say that because it wasn't me that's saying that. It's other people of color that are saying that. I was just the voice for them. And as far as it being an all-black district, okay, maybe on paper it's supposed to be, which actually is kinda racist in itself, but you know, whatever. This, there's also white people and other races that live in District One. So, yes, that's why I'm running in District One. Not necessarily because I care majoritively about the minority. I'm running because I'm trying to bridge that gap.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking y'all, please, we're trying to have a, uh, professional forum, and with side giggles and gags coming from the audience is uncalled for. Uh, so, please, again, remain calm, and let us finish these questions. Thank you.
I mean, honestly, I expected it, but it's fine. You can let, you can let it go. Alright. So, anyway. I don't see the issue with the color. I think that with me running, you need to trust that I'm gonna still represent you, regardless of what the color, maybe me taking this seat is gonna change this whole, it has to be all-black. Why can't I be a white guy representing black people? Why? Why? How do I know that you, that we, we haven't had the same issues in life? Other than skin color? But that's not always... Okay, that's it. Alright, no, that's fine. Well, yeah, just...
Next question. What are your plans for District One? What goals do you have, and how do you plan to go about getting them done?
Alright, I might as well just stay standard. The, um, my plans for District One, to unify District One. And I'm not gonna stop here. No, there's, there's many elections after this. I'm gonna come back, and I'm gonna come back. And you know what? You may kick me away every time, but that's fine. Anyway, my goal is to unify, to educate, to educate the people, and say, "Hey, listen, I'm here for you. You that, this is your situation? Well, let's offer you an alternative." Like I was stating earlier, a lot of my, a lot of the things, the answers to my questions earlier were raised around education. Because if you're smart, then you're not gonna fall, fall folly. Because if you're smart, then you're not gonna fall, fall folly to the rhetoric and ideology. And that's all I have to say about that.
So District One, we are unified. We may not always agree, but for the most part, we are unified. We just need to do what we're supposed to do and what we need to do. Now, I will go ahead, because I didn't get a chance to elaborate earlier, but we wanna have Wall Street on Whitehall. And Wall Street on Whitehall, it came to me, um, visiting other flea markets, why we can't have a flea market on Whitehall? And the reason why, because somebody asked me, well, why you just can't join the farmer's market downtown? All of District One don't live downtown. We need to be able to get to what we need to be able to get to. Wall Street on Whitehall will allow people to have a spot, a free spot, a designated spot. You bring your chair, your table, if you need your tent, and you can make money. You sell what you can need to sell. We got so many talented people in District One, it's a crime-chang. I mean, we can cook, we can make t-shirts, we can sell some, I had some of the best lemonade from them little girls. And I mean, so give everybody an opportunity to make money. Using what you have, just like in the Bible, it says, take what you have, use what you have. So we wanna use what we have and do Wall Street on Whitehall. I will need some help, we'll need some help from the city, marking it off so that it's, it's done decently and order, but it will be a flea market, so people can come. And, and you can advertise your business and do what you need to do. And I wanna make it on Whitehall because everybody has access to Whitehall. Everybody don't have access downtown.
Next question. What have you done for District One in the city of Washington?
What have I done? District One for the city of Washington? It's not, well, I purchased a building that is on the border of One and Two. I'm showing up now to unite District One and Two in this city. I've taken the heck of it for no reason other than my skin color. I am, I'm investing in this town, in this district. I've had conversations with people that just walked by. I've entertained individuals at my house and talked about the politics of District One. I haven't been here long enough to do something great. But I think me standing here and taking all this is a sign of what I can do. Because you can beat me down, but you ain't never gonna beat me. That's what I've done for Washington and District One. I'm a voice. A voice for those people that are intimidated by the regime that's already in place, that are afraid to go vote out of retaliation and harassment, to really speak their mind. That's what I've done, is had that conversation with those people, and that's why I'm here.
Well, you can check my record, I have a strong voting record for District One. When I was in office, we never voted to raise your utility rates, not one time. Because there's another way that the city can make money. But, that other side, District Two, they don't like that way. But there is another way that we can, uh, make money for the city of Washington. So we brought that up several times. One of the things that I'm proud of is, every year, they have Revolutionary Days downtown. So since they were determined to keep doing that, and that's part of their history, I said, but you couldn't have won the Revolutionary War without the Black Patriots. I made the motion to have the Black Patriots statue put on the square. And it is a replica of Austin Dabney, who was a patriot. Because if you're gonna tell the history, and you wanna tell the story, tell the whole story. So since they were determined to have Revolutionary Days downtown, it was only fair that we be equally represented. So that Black monument of the Revolutionary War guy, he was, Austin Dabney was from Wilkes County, and he fought in the Revolutionary War. And so that is to represent us. Because in all forms of history, there would be no history if it wasn't for black history.
Alright, next question. How long have you resided in Washington and named four places to eat in District One?
I've been over, I've been here in over, over twenty years. Uh, so Uncle Tuts, then we got The Lounge. Uh, what else do we have? Uh, 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 The Cap, we got, uh, Cap over there off of Whitehall. And District One, what else? Oh, Dean, that's a fish place, yeah.
Audience, remember, no comments, no help.
Thank y'all.
How long have you resided in Washington and named four places to eat in District One?
Residence, funny word. I do a lot of traveling. So as far as owning property and being around Washington, for about two years. Two years. My wife worked at the tavern for well over a year. And I, I, I spend, like I said, I travel a lot. But that can change, if need be, by being elected from you guys. So, that, that I can change up at any point in time. But I do a lot of traveling, so two years, and places in District One, honestly, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't eaten at any places in District One. I do a lot of, a lot of, a lot of grilling out on my porch. If I want good food, I'm sorry, guys, it's, it's, it's gonna be me making it. Um, I maybe have been to the tavern a handful of times, maybe Zach's Beach. But that's, that's all District Two, I mean, but yeah, for the most part, I cook my own food. Cook my own food. But I'm willing to try. I'm willing to try.
Alright, moving on, uh, next question. When will code enforcement be more enforced in this city, particularly in District One? Years have passed on absent property owners.
I mean, I say, I say when the building becomes an eyesore. When, when it's unsafe. It's not wrong for people to, uh, to have property and only occasionally visit it, people have vacation homes. Uh, now, if that property falls into disarray, and it's, it's a safety hazard to the public, oh yeah, I, I'd issue a code enforcement on it right away. I mean, there's some people that are around our building that might need a little bit of guidance sometimes. But, yeah, I'd say, when it's, when it's a safety hazard, when it affects the public, and if that grass is three feet tall, then we have to talk about that.
Well, all we have to do is enforce it. We have policies and procedures. Uh, I think you get a letter, once they go out and do whatever, you get a letter. And they just need to hold the, the, uh, building owners or the homeowners accountable. I know you get a letter, um, and then I think you have so many days to straighten it out, but until there are consequences, it's gonna keep being the same way. So we just need to stick to the policies and procedures that we already have in place and enforce them.
Next question. How would you go by telling councilmen in District Two and the mayor that they are wrong, and whether they are wrong about, or, now excuse me for this question. I didn't wanna use that. Okay, I'm gonna start over. How would you go by telling councilmen in District Two and the mayor that they are wrong, and whether they are wrong about, or are you willing to voice your opinion out in the open, or do you have to do it in private?
Well, I guess it depends on the situation. So, if it comes up at a City Council meeting, and we hadn't talked about it or whatever, and I have questions, I'm gonna ask those questions. If it's a sidebar conversation or whatever, and, uh, they say, they ask me, they see me around town, and they ask me a question, I'll answer their question. I ain't never scared, you know, the only person I fear is the Lord Himself. And so, I mean, if you got a question, anybody can ask me, I'll be open and honest and transparent. I don't have anything to hide. So yes, I will be vocal at the table.
The answer to the question is if it's not an executive session topic, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, you're wrong. Whenever, now I'm not gonna make a public display of it, because there's also decorum that's required in public office, in the public meetings. You can tactfully respond and hint towards your disagreeance, and then you handle that in private, if you need to. But yeah, I'll, I'll tell you when you're wrong. I definitely will, and I hope that somebody would do that for me.
Alright, next question. How have you connected with the community or business owners?
If there's anyone that walks by, kind of one of those people that kinda hangs out on the porch, and if you're walking by, I'll say hi to you, and I'll strike up a conversation with you. Now, that's not connecting in deep District One, but in the city of Washington, I've connected with many people. Many people know me in the District Two side of things, unfortunately, I'm sorry. But that's because that's where the first half report is from. I'd say through conversations, through my significant other, we have, she has a lot, she's a lot more of the, uh, public relations than I am. And a lot of that gets phoned back to me. Now, when you're a team, that's, that's, that's a relationship, you're a team. So you work together at the goal, I can't be everywhere at once. So sometimes, on a late night when I'm working, well, she's meeting people. She's talking to a lot of people. Business owners in District One. Business owners in District Two. I haven't necessarily met them, but they are met through my significant other. If that makes any sense.
I'm infused in the community. I opened up the first Head Start Center here, off of Lincoln Circle. Um, I go to church here. I am actually the secretary of the Third Shiloh Missionary Baptist Association, the building that you're in. Um, both of my children graduated from Washington Wilkes. I still am a season ticket holder for those home games, and both of my children have graduated. So, I love this community. This community, when I came here over twenty-something years ago, welcomed me with open arms, and I've been down ever since. So, I make all kinds of connections. Oh yeah, and I am the chair of the Democratic, Wilkes County Democratic Committee. So I'm involved, I volunteer, um, my sorority gives scholarships. So I am a part of this community, I am infused in this community, I am District One.
Okay, question back to Kim. What have you learned about the strengths and challenges in District One?
So our strengths are, we are a strong, vital people. We are very intelligent. And we understand the value and the importance of education, hard work, and struggle. We don't forget where we've come from, and we know what to do when given the opportunity. All we need is the opportunity. All we need is the power, and we could run this city. We got several examples. Rosewood, Florida, hey, it was a thriving com- community. Uh, the Wall Street community. We know how to run a city, and we could do a good job. I look at Mayor Burns, we were on the right track, and we lost power. So, that is our strength, is that we are strong, and we know who we are. Our weakness is, sometimes, we don't always see eye to eye. But we can overcome that. We've overcome so many things throughout history, we can overcome anything. There is nothing that we can't do.
The strengths of District One. Well, I think this right here shows some initiative right now. District One is a resilient district. I just think it's been misled. Misled by certain individuals who put trust in to fix your situation for you. And then you lost some of that strength. Because you put your trust in other people, and continuously, and continuously, and continuously, and they lead you astray. But showing up tonight, and those who couldn't show up, and showing up on Election Day, I think you can really show people how strong you are. Show, stand up to the bullies that exist. The people that have stayed in District One and dealt with certain regimes, those are the strong people. And we could still be strong, and we could be stronger once you stand up on Election Day. I think they're doing early voting right now, so, anyway, but yeah, that's, as far as the strengths, I mean, it's within you. Everybody's different. But the unity, and the desire for unity, is a strength in District One. in District One.
All right, so I have four more cards here, and, uh, if you came in, your cards were last you brought to me, these are your, your questions. How familiar are you with the history of District One?
I do like history. Big fan of history. Uh, I'm, I'm very, I'm familiar with District One per se. Am I willing to learn it? Yeah. Yeah. I don't think anyone moved into this town and knew all the history, now didn't we? But having a desire to learn it, well, that's key. That's rare. I have that desire. And I would love to engage in conversation with any of you. Who want to share that history with me, on a personal level? Because I love learning all the neat little things. Oh, so-and-so is a, you know, was a, my great-grandparents were a slave back in the day. I met an individual like that, what, heard about him. But anyway, I just, I, yeah, I would like to learn the history. And through the history, I can better understand what you, what your needs are. Maybe somebody's been holding on to something, or something continuously keeps happening. Other than the, the history itself. So yeah, I'm willing to learn it. I'm willing to learn it. I don't know, I don't know any, anything about it. But, uh, being willing to learn, that's a big, that's a big step.
So, I keep referencing the lawsuit of nineteen ninety-two, because that's actually where the history of District One begins, when we had to have District One and District Two. Let me read something else, because we have some very qualified, very intelligent people in District One. And it says, qualified African-American candidates have run for the Washington City Council, the Wilkes County Board of Commissioners, the Wilkes County Board of Education. However, only one currently serves on the Washington City Council. No black has ever won election in the county commission, and only one black has been elected to the County Board of Education. That's our history. Now, it may have been over thirty years ago, but we can't forget where we came from. And if we don't vote and exercise our right to vote, we're gonna go right back to that. So we're not, it's not, uh, crazy to keep mentioning it, because it is who we are. And we do have to remember, because if we don't remember, we'll fall back into that same thing. There is a District One, there is a District Two for a reason. Because we were never given the opportunity. As many educators as we got in this room sitting right here, now who are retired. Barbara Bacon, just as smart as she wanna be. I mean, knows everything. I mean, we've got, we've got all kinds of people in this room that can make sure that we get done what we need to get done. But until the lawsuit, we didn't have the opportunity to do it. So, yes, the lawsuit is relevant, yes, it was nineteen ninety-two, and yes, it is over thirty-something years ago, but we need to remember, and we need to make sure that we don't go back to that. Because we have a strong, rich history. And we've had some great people come through here. We got Charles Jackson still in the room, Reverend Avery, Mayor Burns, I mean, we've got some really strong people that have come out of District One. So we gotta make sure that we remember our history, and we do what we need to do.
All right. Next question. Would you be swayed by outside influences, bribes? I'm sorry. Would you be swayed by outside influences, bribes? Uh, I guess that's one question. That's question one. So would you be swayed by outside influencer bribes? Uh, second part is, would you be your own person for the people, not just one, but for all?
Most definitely. So first of all, I have been offered bribes. I was offered a good bribe to run against Tuck. I ain't for sale. I am not for sale. Never have been, never will be. But yeah, I was offered good money to run against Tuck. However, I am not for sale. I, you know, I, you, you can't buy me, I'm not for sale, we did enough of that back in the day. So I am not for sale, so no, I do not take bribes. And what was the second part?
Uh, would you be your own person for the people, not just one, but for all people?
For all people, most definitely, like I said. I don't mind crossing the aisle. But I gotta make sure District One is taken care of first. If we can communicate, and we can have a level playing field over here on District One, and I can only be me, everybody else gotta adjust. And, and I'm only me. I mean, that's just it. I am Kimberly Johnson Rainey.
First of all, I don't know who would come up here and say, yeah, I'll take a bribe. And that's the other thing about that question, is people can come up here and they can lie to you. Say, no, I won't. And meanwhile, they're making backdoor deals, they still lie to you, and tell you that you're not, that they're not, and this and that. So, would I? Obviously not. But you don't know if I'm lying. So as far as that question goes, no, I wouldn't. I'm telling the truth, I've always been honest. I can tell you that I've been honest, but then there's people that tell you they've been honest and they're not honest. We know there's preachers like that. People, men of faith that we trust, and then they lie to you. So, but no, I would not take a bribe. Not at all. And, just like I'm doing right now, I'm making waves. Not afraid to make waves. And that's me. That's me all the way. And I can make waves for you in the right direction. Not afraid to stand up to people. So don't, don't get that mixed up. And I, in fact, that's actually a good trait. Because then you know I'm not gonna take crap from anybody. And I'm gonna fight for you.
Next question. What do you think, or how do you feel about the history of the city council when there is a three-three city council stalemate? The mayor is always, the mayor always breaks the vote in favor of District Two. What do you think? How do you feel?
In regards to the mayor breaking the vote between the two districts, I believe that it's only, it doesn't occur as often as I feel it might, it should, or others feel it should. A lot of times, you just let the tie be a tie, and you guys work it out. But he'll make a vote on something that he knows. And this is just my, my, my perspective of it. On something he knows that is pressing. Something we can't wait for the council, who over the past decade, or since ninety-two, because, well, you can't really get a lot done when it's this way and that way, you know? And people are unwilling to go across the aisle on the key issues. The key issues. So sometimes, he makes that, he has to make that decision, and he looks like a bad guy, and I'm, but he doesn't want to. But just know that that is gonna benefit the citizens of Washington in a positive way. Is that, that was the answer to the question? That was the answer to the question?
Yes. Did you wanna read to me?
Yeah. No, no, that was, that was a, like, the mayor, like, what do you think? Yeah, I already talked about, I mean, yeah, the history, yeah, I'm familiar with the history, it's really pretty tough, yeah. Which is why we're coming in here, and I'm gonna have that conversation with both, they're both District, District Two and One. And the middleman. All right, there we go.
So, I think after Ames Barnett breaking ties for in favor of District Two for eight years, the next mayor never broke a tie in favor of District One. And now, we have a mayor, so sometimes he lets it die, and he wants the council to work it out. I think District One is just fed up with that. I think that we just really need the power, and we need a break. Everything, and District One, if I remember correctly, we're really the only ones who ever bring up stuff. If I remember correctly, from when I was on council and looking at these, we're the ones that bring up items mostly for discussion, because we're looking for change. And I think that, you know, we need, I think we're just fed up for the most part. Eight years of Ames, then DeGolian did it the same way. I think it's just time for some honest conversation, and making sure that every voice is heard. And we need a level playing field.
Okay, down to my last question.
Hallelujah.
All right. As of now, the city council as a whole has difficulty following the open meetings laws. What will you do to ensure that the council follows all laws, especially pertaining to the rules on exer- executive sessions?
So the rules on executive session are very clear. There are certain things that cannot be discussed openly. Now, right before Mayor Burns took office, the city council at that time stripped all the powers from the mayor. So really, the mayor only has really about three functions. That's to run the meeting, break a tie, and make appointments for the, the different authorities and boards. They stripped the mayor of all of that. So, we really just need to follow what's in place, and what's in the charter, and what our guidelines are. As far as people being able to speak, I think that is, because I think that's one of the things that they did leave the mayor once, they stripped him of everything else, is to be able to run the meeting. So we just need to make sure that everybody's following the guidelines, and we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We shouldn't be breaking the law. We should be doing things decently and in order, and everything should be done respectfully.
I mean, that, that's, that's a very easy question to answer. There's already guidelines in place. So you just follow the guidelines. I mean, that's pretty much the end of that. You hold true, you don't argue it. You maintain decorum. That, that's it? That's, it's simple enough, I don't know, okay, it, it works?
We would give the candidates, uh, a chance to make a closing statement if they so choose. Uh, whoever wants to go, grab the mic.
There's a lot that I learned tonight. In taking in the reactions to the things I said. I haven't been around a long time. That doesn't mean I'm not willing to, to fight and to make a change. And I think I've made that, it's a very constructive change that I'm pushing for. I don't like the division any more than you guys do, District One, District Two. I wish it wasn't the way it is. This is an equal room to me. And I hope that you, you really believe that when I say it. I have no ounce of hatred towards anyone from a different race or background in my being. I'm, I was a child of poverty. So, where I am today, I got myself there. And for those of you that don't know how, which a lot, some of you are a little older, so you're gonna teach me a few things. But I ask that you trust that I'm gonna make the right decisions by consulting you the entire time. Vote Chris Kettrow, September sixteenth, thank you.
Again, I wanna say thank you, 'cause most of y'all are friends and family. I appreciate everything, the love and the support that you have given me so far. I will fight for you. I am District One. I am the best candidate. Early voting started yesterday. Y'all can keep on voting, we got Saturday voting on the thirtieth. I need your support, and I need your prayers, and I need your vote. Kimberly Johnson Rainey, September sixteenth, District One. And so we want our candidates to be encouraged tonight. But saying we, I think it was a little fiery, come on, somebody. I think we got tripped sometime.